Yep. This over here.
Morning, Larry.
Morning.
How are you?
Yes, we're good.
Good.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Today, as you noticed, we don't have our iPads up here, so we are no longer Zooming, but we are live streaming today. And so because of that, we are also, all five of us, back to normal conditions where we sit at the diocese. And we are also with the county attorney and John Norris on here, so we can all be one happy family at the table. So we've got some exciting things going on this morning, apparently. But with that, we'll go ahead and get started with roll call.
Van Orte.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Hawkinsmith.
Here.
Brownell.
Here.
Conley.
Here. Action on the minutes of the previous meeting.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Yes.
Brownell.
Conley.
Yes. Any special claims?
None.
Action on the bill as submitted by the county auditor. Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes. We have our first proclamation. I think Bob's going to read.
Thanks, Angela. This is a proclamation, board supervisors, today, whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem that can be prevented, and whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Iowa, and whereas child abuse can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effect that have lasting consequences on the victims of abuse, whereas productive factors are coalitions that reduce or eliminate the risk and promote social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, this law, and enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas all members of the community benefit from creating conditions that support strong and healthy families, whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote social, emotional well-being with children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Polk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby... Is that all? Maybe you just... You'll get the last sentence of this, at least. That's the best part. Now therefore be it resolved that Polk County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April as a National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Polk County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for children and families.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Next proclamation is the Red Shirts National Public Health Week 2022. Steve.
Thank you to you, and this is for you. Whereas the week of April 4th through the 10th, 2022, is National Public Health Week, and the theme is "Public Health is Where You Are." And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has drastically changed the face of healthcare and public health, the Polk County Health Department staff and PRN staff have worked tirelessly to ensure the safety and well-being of our community. Whereas from January 2021 through February 2022, our call center staff answered 14,469 live calls regarding COVID-19 and scheduled 4,742 COVID-19 and flu shots. The call center team provided a great service to the community in helping to answer questions and to ease the mind of many worried residents. Whereas since December 2020, our COVID-19 drive-through clinic administered 41,730 doses... Wow. ...of the COVID-19 vaccine. The clinic provided vaccines in rain and shine, blizzards, negative wind chill, and very hot and humid Iowa summer days. The team worked so efficiently that they were able to vaccinate hundreds of residents every day. Our health department and PRN staff knew they needed to vaccinate our community, no matter the weather situation, to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Whereas the health department hired 60 PRN medical staff and two on-call staff to help during the pandemic, the PRN staff provided assistance with vaccinations, contact tracing, meal delivery, and call center. Many PRN had other jobs in the medical field but wanted to assist in Polk County throughout the pandemic. Whereas the Polk County Health Department has 44 full-time employees, during the pandemic, many of our employees wore multiple hats, worked incredibly long hours, and sacrificed time with their family, friends, and even vacations to fight the pandemic. Health department members took on new roles, built and sustained relationships with community partners, and developed innovative campaigns to reduce the spread of the virus and increase COVID-19 vaccinations. From the pandemic, a Polk County Medical Coordination Center was established. This team will continue to work to improve healthcare throughout the county. A community health worker program was also created. In this program, trained leaders in ethnic-based organizations to educate their communities about the COVID-19 vaccination or vaccine. Whereas the county is incredibly proud of the health department for their dedication, determination, and passion to improve the lives of our community throughout the pandemic, we celebrate your team during this year's National Public Health Week and every National Health... Public Health Week moving forward. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Polk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 4th through the 10th, 2022, as National Public Health Week 2022 in Polk County, and call upon the people of Polk County to observe this week by thanking our Polk County Health Department staff and PRN staff for helping to keep our county safe and healthy during the COVID-19 pandemic.
How about a round of applause? I think that proclamation says it all. Thank you very much for all you've done.
Numbers are amazing. Amazing work.
Okay, now for a little fun and excitement, Tom.
Thank you, Angela. You know, there was a really important proclamations, and now she's right, I get to do the fun one now. First of all, a lot of you folks have been around county government for a long time. All remember Larry Warwick. Larry's sitting back in the back, back here. Longtime employee at General Services, and Larry called me here, I don't know what's Larry, two, three weeks ago, and asked about Barbershop Quartet Month, or the day that they have their 75th anniversary, if we could do a proclamation. I said, absolutely. Can you bring some of the guys down, do a number for us? When you come down, we'll do the proclamation. So I assume all these gentlemen here for that purpose. It's perfect. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Will we have an opportunity to form a... To do a little... Do one for us, Larry? Absolutely. Perfect. Okay. I'll read the proclamation first. Whereas the Harmony Delegation Chorus, Des Moines Chapter of Barbershop Harmony Society, is celebrating its 75th anniversary on April 30th at the show at New Hope Assembly of God Church, and whereas the Harmony Delegation Chorus welcomes and encourages singers of all ages to strive for excellence in singing, to inspire one another, nurture meaningful relationships, and give communities exceptional vocal performances, and whereas the Harmony Delegation Chorus celebrates harmony in the barbershop style, provides an opportunity to experience the joy of four-part acapella singing, and introduces and sustains vocal music in the lives of people everywhere, and whereas the Harmony Delegation Chorus is committed to collaborative relationships with schools and other organizations to promote lifelong opportunities to experience the joy of singing, providing education, festivals, workshops, and camps through its Youth in Harmony programs. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Polk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby claim April 30th, 2022, to be Harmony Delegation Barbershop Chorus Day in Polk County, Iowa, and recognize the Harmony Delegation Chorus for their commitment to bring people together in harmony and fellowship to enrich lives through singing. Now if we can... Now, I can't sing along with you. Candidly, I sang the East High School song the other day on Facebook, and I've gotten a lot of comments since then that I shouldn't sing. But I did remember the words, at least, most of them. So anyway, but if... I don't know if you want to assemble up here, how you want to go do this, Larry? Do a quick number for everybody?
Stand around.
Okay, everybody do it.
In the round.
Wow.
Nice job. Everybody, thank you so much.
That was great.
Thanks, Larry. They'll have the official proclamation, I think, I don't know.
Do pictures with each of the groups.
What's that?
Do you want to do pictures with each of the groups, quick?
Yeah, okay, let's do that. You guys want to do that?
Yep. I have the proclamations.
We're gonna do some quick pictures up here, if we could, if you guys got a couple of minutes, with all three groups separately.
That way again.
This way?
Daddy in there. Okay. Hey, look over here. Perfect. For Richard.
How we gonna get all the guys in here, Sarah?
Yeah, why don't the five of you go back up to your seat, and then we'll have the dog fill in. So just stay behind your seat.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Hey, Becky. Give him that to you, or Larry, or somebody. Okay. I just gave it to Becky to give to Larry.
Okay.
Okay, can you see us? Gather in?
That'll have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. We have one public hearing. Granting temporary construction easement. It's a resolution for the city of Des Moines for the Eastern Boulevard Reconstruction Project, its land known as Four Mile Creek Greenway. Is there proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this? Anyone like to speak regarding this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing and ask for a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell. Conley.
Yes. At this time, anybody want to speak? It's in the audience on any of the resolutions. Anyone like to speak on any of the resolutions? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Resolutions.
Number 10, resolution authorizing the county engineer and director of public works to sign certain Iowa Department of Transportation documents. Number 11, resolution approving equipment lease agreement with Heartland Co-op for the Iowa Cover Crop Cedar Project. Number 12, resolution accepting bid from Quality Striping for pavement marking annual refurbishment, special emblems, and intersections. Number 13, resolution accepting bid from Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation for 2022 hot-mix asphalt resurfacing projects. Number 14, resolution approving easement document from the city of Des Moines for the 2022 neighborhood sidewalk program on county-owned property. Number 15, resolution approving temporary easement purchase for bridge replacement project. Number 16, resolution approving the recommendations of the Soil and Water Conservation District Commissioner for allowances and denials of the impoundment structures exemption. Seventeen and eighteen are resolutions approving final plats of Cass Acres Plat 1 and Forest Ridge Estates Plat 3. Number 19, resolution approving preliminary plat of the Rampton Grove.
Move the resolutions collectively.
Any questions? Comments? Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Twenty and twenty-one are resolutions authorizing the city of Des Moines the use of parking lot at 2309 Euclid on May 14th and May 21st, 2022.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Number 22, resolution approving agreement for services with children and families of Iowa.
Move.
Resolution, second.
Roll call.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell. Conley.
Yes.
Number 23, resolution authorizing settlement of workers' compensation claims.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Number 24, resolution approving project expenditures for American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Polk County Housing Trust Fund for Affordable Housing Initiatives.
I'll move the resolutions.
Second.
I see that Eric Bermeister's in the audience. Eric, you want to give a couple of comments to this? Sure you have a couple, at least. He approaches with his M95 mask.
We are, as a reminder, having a press conference at 1:00 today, I think it is? Is that right, John?
Right.
Okay.
Eric Bermeister, Executive Director, Polk County Housing Trust Fund, 505 Fifth Avenue, Suite 1000. Thank you for this resolution, for the recognition, the broad recognition of the need for affordable housing in Polk County, and for the Board of Supervisors' longstanding support of this initiative. I will say that the need for affordable housing, particularly for our most vulnerable citizens, is great. This seems like a lot of money, and it is. It's a once-in-literally-a-generation opportunity to address the affordable housing need in this county. But yet, we also know that there is an even greater need out there, and that we pledge, as the Polk County Housing Trust Fund, to use these dollars for projects that will be sustainable, that will serve the most vulnerable folks in our community, particularly with preference given to those folks who make less than 30% of area median income, and many who need, in addition to housing, need supportive services in order to live their best life. So thank you for this. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have, and look forward to the next couple of years, because we do have a short trigger on these dollars, to making a real significant difference in the lives of many people in this county.
Angela, if I could, I just want to thank Eric, you, as well as the rest of the panel. The panel discussions we've had on affordable housing have been great discussions, collaborative discussions, and with you and Ann and Russ and Sarah leading the group. I mean, we... Great, great work, and thank you, anyway, for your help on it.
And thank you for the resources. I mean, it is just an absolutely unbelievable opportunity and an unbelievable step forward for this county. So thank you again.
Thanks, Eric.
I would also mention that there is a good, interesting article in the Register today about our Afghan refugees. At the heart of the issue, though, I think, if you read the article, is housing issues that we just don't have the housing for to put people into quickly and adequately. And so this cuts across a lot of demographics. So Eric, best of luck and congratulations.
Thank you again.
That article was very alarming today, but we all knew it just puts it right there in the face of us.
Yep.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Number 25, resolution approving community development grant for American Legion Hispanic Post Number 731.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Number 26, resolution approving community betterment grant awards.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell. Conley.
Yes. Communications.
Number 27, manure management plan update from Brad Mochley, Elkhart, Iowa.
Receiving file.
Number 28, notice of appraisement of damages and time for appeal in the matter of the condemnation of certain rights and land for the Des Moines River Levy Alterations Phases B and C Project.
Refer to county attorney and the treasurer.
Number 29, city of Ankeny notice of hearing on application for voluntary urbanized annexation of certain territories.
Refer to public works and the county attorney. Budget actions. We do have one on the agenda, folks. It is capital improvements, asset and repair replacement for the chiller at the Justice Center, and then also we're replacing a duress button at, I think it's youth detention, if I recall. Is that right? They're all shaking their head yes. Okay.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes. Memorandum of appointments.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Hawkinsmith.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes. And then before we adjourn, I want to just follow up a little bit on the meeting that staff had, John and I and Sarah and others, for the beginning of our discussion and the process with Polk County Health Services and the Mental Health and Disability Service Team transition. It went very well, and I think John put that, some of that, in his update. And we're gonna have another meeting this Thursday, a smaller team, to continue to work towards the goal of putting the... Making sure that the team moves over to Polk County, and with the number-one goal delivering the, you know, the services, as we continue to do, but we also agreed upon making sure that the group homes and some grant-related activities stay within the Polk County Health Services, as the chair of Polk County Health Services was also there and understood that very well, and we agreed upon all of that. So it's moving in the right direction, and we have a provider meeting, chair with Polk County Health Services and myself and staff have a meeting this Friday, I think it is, just to reiterate everything that we talked about, kind of setting them at ease that, you know, nothing's gonna change and everything will remain the same, no disruption in services or any of that. So that happens this Friday, and hopefully by the sometime next week, we'll be in... We'll all be in motion with the county staff and the transition.
I had one item and then a request, and I know this won't be a surprise to anybody, but some of you may have seen the headlines over the past month about food banks across the country that are seeing a dramatic surge in demand. There are three factors that are driving this. I think the first is the elimination of the monthly dependent child tax credit. This federal program was created to help families during the pandemic but has since been eliminated. This program lifted millions of families and children out of poverty. In addition, many families will be surprised when their tax refund comes back and is much lower than expected, as many people received a majority of their 2021 earned income tax credit in the fall of 2021. The second item is the elimination of the enhanced SNAP benefits, or food stamps. In Iowa, families will see a cut of at least $95 per month for more than 150,000 households in the state, and some families could see as much as $230 less than SNAP benefits monthly. Starting April 1st, Iowa SNAP families will have 28 million fewer dollars loaded on SNAP EBT cards each month. As of January 31st, 2022, Polk County had 26,372 families or SNAP households, which is 54,509 individuals. Estimating the median amount of change, 162.50 per month for every household, the estimated decrease in SNAP support in Polk County would be 4,285,450 per month. The third item is inflation at the grocery store. Food prices have spiked 9% year-over-year, with meat prices like beef, pork, and chicken up 16%, 14%, and 12%, um, respectively. Additionally, this time of year already puts pressure on the system as school ends and kids are out for summer breaks, so they're losing some of those meals that they would normally get through the school breakfast and lunch program. So, just for, you know, perspective, $10 provided to, uh, the food bank, or D-Mark, or, uh, St. Vincent de Paul provides about one week of food for a neighbor in need. And when I started hearing about the food bank demand in the, in a few weeks ago, I reached out to D-Mark, the Food Bank of Iowa, and also St. Vincent de Paul, just asking them what they saw on the horizon, and all of them saw like alarming, uh, increases in requests that they don't feel, um, many of them don't feel will have the capacity to, to totally meet. And since this is a community-wide problem, and I think it's statewide problem, I think what I'd like to see us do is at least maybe do one board staff around the, the whole area of food insecurity, just as we, as we make decisions on ARPA as it relates to economic well-being and other issues. I know we can't solve the, the whole demand on food pantries, but locally, if there's something we can do in the county, working both with the private and public sector and the ecumenical community to meet some of this rising demand, I think, um, we've got a perfect storm coming together, and I'd like to at least see us have the discussion, as, as, as maybe a board discussion.
Yeah, I, there's definitely, with the inflation of the groceries, uh, I know there are thousands of people with food insecurity. Our seniors have food insecurity. It's not just our children and families. Uh, SNAP has been reduced, and that's something that, you know, the state made decisions on and the federal government. I'm sure we could try to fit in, you know, uh, staff meeting at some time. Uh, I don't know if economic well-being has talked about food insecurity. They've got a lot on their plate right now, but, uh, we'll certainly try to fit something in for a staffing on food insecurity. We've invested millions in food and through Hunger Free and all of that, so.
And I talked to the CEO at Food Bank about a month ago, and there's some concern among the food, food community, let's call it, that they're not one of the four buckets. And just because you're not one of the four, and fit in one of the four buckets possibly, doesn't mean we're walking away from you. Food insecurity has been an important part of what we do here in Polk County for a long time, and will continue to. But it doesn't have to be one of the four buckets in order for us to, to pay attention to you. So, yeah, I, I think a board staff at some point makes some sense and get their perspective on things, and perhaps there's some solutions we can be a part of.
Yeah, I think possibly, you know, an update might be good. And I look at TJ out there, you know, when, when we invested in Hunger Free Polk County, what, $5 million? $5 million for these same very issues. I, I know they're probably somewhat worse now because of political environment, some of the things that state government and the decisions that they've made. You know, we set up, uh, IT infrastructure for food rescue. I would like to be updated on how food rescue programs going. I know that was one of the priorities when we worked through Hunger Free, as well as the funding for food, for all the different pantries, but, um, that money, and I think we partnered with D-Mark through that whole process. They were a great partner, by the way. But, yeah, maybe an update, TJ, on, on where we are with the technology piece of it too, because I know that's been extremely helpful. If you could just really, really quickly, then we could do the board staff also, supervisor asked for, but.
Thank you Supervisor Hawkinsmith. Anthony Jefferson, CIO for Polk County. So, so the food recovery application has been in production for a little bit over a year. We have partnered with D-Mark and many local pantries, whether it's in the individual communities themselves, or Christian charities, or, um, smaller pantries as well. So, we have brought on program after program after program, and the nice thing about the application and the technology itself, it allows them to do, from a collaboration perspective, what they couldn't do before. So, there was food being left and not recovered because either the trucks weren't available to go get them, the refrigeration wasn't available. So, the application allows these partners to work together and maximize, uh, the efficiency of gaining and recovering the food. So, we, we just brought on two new pantries last week. So, it is a robust and positive initiative, and I think it has legs to grow into even, even more than just the food recovery piece, because we are managing the fleets, we're sharing vehicles, we're talking about when those vehicles are in use, even if, uh, let's say Wesley Acres has a fleet of vehicles, they're only using them from this time of day to another. So, there are other pantries who are using those vehicles after those hours. So, we're maximizing every resource we can get our hands on. So, it's going really well.
Maybe, maybe just an idea about all those different components. I, I know, um, Angela led the charge on some funding for, for Meals on Wheels for a capital project there, here a while back. But I know that based on the food rescue program that we'd set up through Hunger Free and your shop, TJ, and thank you for your help on it, there probably still is food that's being wasted.
Oh, there's no doubt.
We could still capture with collaborative efforts, so.
It's amazing. I, I just found out last week that, uh, there are several organizations, um, that will not provide the food to, um, what's the name of the group? Aubrey's?
Eat Greater Des Moines.
Eat Greater Des Moines, because they're not affiliated with Feeding America.
Yep.
They will with Food Bank, but Food Bank doesn't pick up that kind of food. So, there are so many disconnections that we're wasting tons and tons of food that should be going out to the folks that really need it, especially after I read the article in the paper today, how many people are going hungry. But we can't pick up the food because of some bureaucratic rule, in their own minds, by the way, that doesn't really exist.
Right. How about the mobile food? The, 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 D-Mark's still doing that?
Yes.
In the hoods?
Yes. But they, every day, there's, they have another stumbling block because Food Bank has certain rules, and, you know, they need to lighten up on some of those rules, DMAC, I mean, or D-Mark, they all need to come together to work. And there's just, once again, they're fragmented. You're, when we started Hunger Free, everybody came together. They were all supposed to work together. Well, now, it's like this again, you know? And that, and that shouldn't happen. Everybody's got the same goal. We're supposed to feed people.
Right.
And I, I'm not going to spend a dime, not one dime, until they all start working together.
And I, I don't presuppose to have the answer to some of the political pieces in there.
There's a lot.
But what we've done is tried to look past that and create a platform that is completely agnostic.
That's what it's supposed to do.
It is available for everybody. So, what, the one big benefit we've brought to the table is that we created a universal reporting mechanism within our application. So, everybody who's using it, because there are a lot of pantries who have their own folks that they have to report to, but they also are a Feeding America pantry, so they have to report up to the state at the Food Bank, right? Well, those reporting requirements are totally different. One's doing it by pounds, one's doing it by items, things like that, right? So, the universal reporting mechanism in our application allows them to save a ton of time, just with the backend paperwork, so that they can have an easier avenue to get more resources on the street to pick up more food. So, um, I think that the legs on this are extensive. I think that there's a lot of collaboration out there that can be capitalized on that's not happening now. And we, you know, we've always been open to Michelle over at the Food Bank and other entities to come on board. I know that, uh, the Food Bank specifically was working with Ruon a year ago to do something similar. I have no idea how that's going, but I think that's something we should probably look into, see how, if that came to fruition, or what condition that's in. But the smaller pantries, the, uh, you know, the, the smaller entities all have a place within this framework, and they can get access to resources they normally wouldn't have.
Well, and that dashboard technology that D-Mark came up with is just amazing to be able to track these families and understand what their needs are, identify them, reach out to them.
That's what we needed.
And, and some of the interesting information they came up with, I was just so impressed by, um, you know, a lot of folks, you know, um, you know, just because of a lot of media, more than anything else, assume that, you know, folks that are using these pantries just, you know, because they don't want to work whatever. That's not true at all. I think they found that 10, less than 10% of the folks that use the pantries, were not working. The other 90-some percent were working two and three different jobs in order to make ends meet. So, that's just such a, a, a fallacy that, I mean, anyway, that, that dashboard technology, I'd like to maybe talk to them over there
Yeah.
about how that, maybe that could be upgraded, or if it's working well. Because I remember the first time I saw it, I was just amazed by the information and data they were able to gather with it, so.
Yeah, so two things real quick. We'll participate in whatever you do for the board staff and show you a demonstration of our system, and we'll bring in some of the pantries that are using it and give you a kind of a grounds look at how it's working. The other thing I would say is that, uh, you know, look back three or four years and realize that what, what you guys did when you were going, when you were moving forward with Hunger Free Polk County, and the way we incorporated GIS and geospatial data into a map that kind of gave a real holistic view of all the pantries, that changed this community. I mean, you guys were able to look at that data and say, "We have real food deserts. We have real problems with the way we're operating these pantries." You made that, that known, and that entire environment changed. Those pantries hours changed, and so many more people were able to get the access to what they needed. So, the data is important, these systems are important, but more important is the way you use them, right? And, and you have been successful in the past doing these things, so we just need to keep moving these initiatives forward, and we'll help more and more people every day.
When I got out of college, I was, uh, went for a huge corporation, and their mantra was, "Never give an employee a compliment, they'll just get complacent." So, I'll get you a, give you a compliment here anyway, TJ. I had lunch with Clav Community Services, which Matt will be taking over here shortly, their pantry, and they said they've been using your program, and they're just absolutely thrilled with it. It's easy to use, easy to learn, they've got volunteers using it, and they've been able to double their food rescue initiative. So, it's not all negative.
No.
You're, you're right, it's been a, it's been a mix, and, but it's been pretty positive for them, and that's great. They're just kind of getting off the ground, and it's working well.
I mean, it's a change, right? So, it, it does take time. There are some pantries and organizations who dive headfirst, and they are up and running quickly and full force. There are others that just kind of, you know, try to figure out how to get it into their workflows. So, we're dealing with both sides of that fence, and, uh, we're meeting with our steering committee on the regular and having, uh, updates and new software updates all the time. So, it is moving forward, and it's going well. And I think the legs are long, and we, we can, we can grow it even more.
Right, I think so. And they're collaborating with Urbendale Pantry, so there, there's a lot of that going on right now, which is great.
Thank you.
Well, from a local government standpoint, it's not much different than, than water, water quality from a collaborative effort. We can't impact what the rest of the state does. We can only impact what we do locally. And I think we've been a leader in the state locally and been a model for what we can do, for what local government can do. But like I said, what they do up there, and what impacts the whole state, we don't.
We can't control that.
Yeah, right, but expand on that for a minute. I don't want to go on. But we built this specifically as a cloud-based, agnostic, scalable system. So, that's the beauty of this. It is working well for Polk County. It will be growing in Polk County, but it doesn't mean Columbus, Ohio couldn't call us tomorrow and say, "Can we use it?"